So, we didn't do it before.
70. 70.
We're taking you up.
So, we're taking photo.
Hello, this is.
Nice to meet you, tripod crew. Nice to have you on tripod.
Check, check. Check, 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 check.
It's a little crazy, the weather.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am. Check, check. Check, already.
Miggs, senador. Pursuant to Article 6, Section 15 of the Constitution, the first session of the second regular session of the Senate in the 17th Congress of the Philippines is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer to be led by Senator Juan Miguel Miggs Subiri.
Let us put ourselves in the presence of the Lord. Dear Father, you are the greatest of all, the most powerful and all-knowing. We bow down our heads to you. Today, we start the second regular session of the 17th Congress. Another year has passed and we have come before you again to seek your blessing. Please bless this assembly brought together to serve your people and for this opportunity to carry out your will. Father, we thank you. Keep us always mindful of our duty to serve in every way you did, the same way that you did, for one and for all, in full humility and ready to sacrifice. We pray that you will keep us on the path of righteousness and justice. Teach us not to allow foolish pride to blind us to the wisdom of your ways. Guide us with the light of your word to see the path clearly. Give us the strength of your passion to persevere in our mission to do what is right. For we have been taught in Galatians Chapter 6, Verse 9, "Let us not become weary in doing good, for at the proper time we will reap the harvest. We'll reap a harvest if we do not lose heart." We have made an honorable commitment to you and to the Filipino people, one of good governance, noble actions, honesty and transparency. And we pray for the ability to carry this out in our words and actions as we work on delivering a government that will truly have the Filipino people's best interest at heart. We humbly offer ourselves and actions to you. May everything we do and all that we are be for your greater glory. This we ask to Christ our Lord. Amen.
The Senate choir will lead us in the singing of the Philippine national anthem and after the national anthem, please remain standing as the choir will also lead us in the singing of the Senate hymn called Senado Marangal.
Address in a joint session of both houses.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt Senate concurrent resolution number 6.
Is there any objection? There being a non-Senate concurrent resolution number 6 is hereby adopted. And pursuant thereto, I hereby appoint to the Joint Notification Committee on the part of the Senate the following senators: Senator Lauren Legarda, Nancy Binay, Senator Grace Poe, Senator Risa Ontiveros, Senator Cynthia Villar, and Senator Sani Angara.
Mr. President, Senator Angara wants to be recognized. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, Majority Leader, there is a lot of anti-discrimination legislation in the legislative mail at present. I'm just wondering that why I was singled out with the ladies. I withdraw, Mr. President. It's just notable. I just wanted to put it on record.
Yes. All right, Mr. President. We take note of the manifestation. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, we are now ready to listen to an address from the Senate President.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Magandang umaga po sa inyo lahat. Good morning, my dear colleagues, excellencies of the diplomatic corps, members of the cabinet, former senators and members of the Senate family. Today, we open the second regular session of the Senate of the 17th Congress in the best possible circumstance. A survey was released last week which showed that we enjoy a 59% approval rating, four points higher than the survey I cited in my message to you when we closed the first regular session. The same survey also showed that 57% of Filipinos trust our institution, three percentage points higher than the 54% rating we received in the previous survey. Congratulations are therefore in order for everyone, my fellow senators, your staff and officials and employees of the Senate. The survey says the Senate is the most trusted major institution in our country today. This should inspire us as we resume our session. But with higher trust and higher approval come higher expectations. We may have performed well before, but we must exceed the standard we set in the previous session if we are to retain or exceed the trust and approval that we have obtained from the public. I am confident that we, the Senate family, can successfully meet this challenge. In this session, we will again address issues of national importance. We will ease the burden of working and middle-class Filipinos while ensuring that all government programs remain funded through the Tax Reform for Acceleration and Inclusion Act or TRAIN. We will ensure the safety of our people by strengthening the Anti-Terrorism Law. We will improve the delivery of basic services through the National ID System. We will provide health care to all Filipinos through the Universal Health Care Act. We will pursue a path to lasting peace in Mindanao by addressing the valid concerns of our Muslim brothers and sisters through the Bangsamoro Basic Law. Finally, we will empower our regions to determine their development plans, their overall direction through the shift to federalism. These topics alone would require much discussion, study and analysis on our part, but they are not the only items in our agenda. We have 1,242 bills and 297 resolutions pending before our committees. More will come as we realize new ideas to improve our laws to better serve the public and improve the quality of life of all Filipinos. Each bill or measure must be scrutinized with a view of accepting or rejecting it based on how well it can be of service to the people. We are looking at a lot of work. These are large numbers, but they are not daunting numbers. We have proven in the previous session just how much work we can put in when the public welfare is on the line. I am confident we can do just as well or even better than how we did in the previous session. There are no better companions for the tasks ahead other than the Senate family. other than the Senate family. So, to everyone, welcome back and let's get back to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, before we suspend the session, may we request our colleagues to remain in the session hall for the photo session. May we advise the public not to enter the hall while the photo session is ongoing. And, Mr. President, there being no further business, I move that we suspend the session until 4 o'clock this afternoon, at which time we shall reconvene at the session hall of the House of Representatives to hear the State of the Nation Address of President Rodrigo Rova Duterte in a joint session of both houses of Congress. And when we adjourn the joint session, the session of the Senate shall be considered adjourned until tomorrow at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So move, Mr. President.
So before we act on the motion, we request our colleagues to remain at the session hall for the photo session and we advise again the public not to enter the hall while the photo session is ongoing. So is there any objection to the motion of the Majority Leader to suspend the session? There being none, session is suspended until 4 o'clock this afternoon for the joint session of Congress. The members of the Senate are advised to proceed to and be seated at the session hall of the House of Representatives by 3:30 p.m. And after the joint session, the session of the Senate shall be considered adjourned until 3 o'clock.